Our first Virtual Madison Area Transportation Planning Board meeting. And it looks like we have a quorum. Bill, would you please take the role just to make sure?
Yep. I have unmuted everyone. So, Balda? Samba Balda? Bergamini?
Here.
Here.
Lotmeyer?
Here.
Foster?
Yeah.
Hack?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
Okay. Minahan?
Here.
Opitz?
Here.
Stravinsky?
Here.
Tierney?
Here.
And Wood? Okay.
All right. And then, Bill, would you like me to read the instructions?
Yes.
Welcome to our Virtual Madison Area Transportation Planning Board, or MPO, meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. To the members of the MPO and city staff, the chair, clerk, and tech facilitator are responsible for muting and unmuting MPO members. Please be mindful that during any roll call, all panelists will be unmuted until completed, at which time the chair will place panelists back on mute. Voting will be considered unanimous. However, if you object to unanimous vote, please use the raise hand feature when the chair asks for objections. After clicking Participants at the bottom of your screen, you can find the Raise Hands feature at the bottom of your participants list, which is on the right. Also, use the Raise Hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak or ask questions. This includes staff who are being asked a question. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Please wait for the chair to unmute you before speaking. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. If you are watching the live stream, please mute the stream now. There is a 30 to 40 second delay and the audio will cause feedback when you are unmuted. Members of the public who have registered to speak. When your name is called, the facilitator will find your name matching the name you provided in your registration and permit you to speak. If your name does not match, you will not be permitted to speak. Please wait until you are unmuted to begin talking. The clerk will tell you when your time is up. If you need to share documentation with the MPO, please send it via email to mpo@cityofmadison.com. Unless there are questions of you, you will be unable to speak for the remainder of the meeting. If you would still like to register, go to the clerk's website and click on Meeting Schedule. In order to keep the meeting with the best quality we can, if you do not wish to speak, we encourage you to go watch the meeting streamed live at cityofmadison.com/citychannel or at the City of Madison YouTube channel, or find us on Charter Digital 994 and AT&amp;T U-verse 99. Chair of the floor is yours. Just on the mark.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Our next item of business is approval of the March 4th meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? And if you could say your name as you make the motion, that would be helpful.
So Alder Tierney raised his hand.
Okay. Alder Tierney made the motion, seconded.
So you would need to unmute him.
Oh, I see.
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry. I'm still learning this too.
That's right. Only, only Bill and yourself can unmute.
Right. So I'm going to do this on my desktop because I can see a lot more people there. Let me see if I can do it here.
And it's easier to see who's raised their hand if you're looking at the participants window and not, not the gallery view.
Understood. But I don't have the ability to unmute, so.
If you hover over their name with your cursor, you should have a.
Well, I might be confusing you because I have the two screens going. All right. So let me just, I'm sorry about this. I thought we, I didn't think this would be so. Try it this way. So Doug. Unmute. Okay. So I've unmuted Doug and Alder Tierney. Okay. I see. All right. There we go. Sorry, gentlemen. Did one of you wish to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Moved by Tierney, seconded by Wood. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, no raise of, no raising hands, I will call the, well, I will just assume that we will, unless there, if you could raise your hand if you wish to object to the approval, otherwise we will cast this as a unanimous vote. Seeing no objection, the motion is adopted unanimously. Okay. Item three is communications. Bill, please.
Yes, there were four communications in the, in the packet. A letter from WISTOT approving tip amendment four. A letter from myself in support of Metro's grant application for three articulated buses, some equipment to service the buses, and some bus priority treatments. I had to send that out under my name as staff. We didn't, we didn't have a meeting to have the board approve it, but I'm, I'm quite sure the board would have approved the letter. And then the third item was a, a letter from WISTOT approving the projects that the MPO selected for STBG urban funding, just, just kind of a formality. The schedules for those projects are still being finalized, but it looks like they, they will be able to be scheduled according to the, the, the schedules that we had in program in the, in the tip. And then the fourth communication was a letter from MPO staff commenting on the Village of Cross Plains Urban Servicery Amendment application to the RPC. And then I sent in email prior to the meeting, a response that we got from the village regarding those comments, which related primarily to pedestrian bicycle connections for the, for the planned development, as well as a comment about planning for future connections to area to the south of that, that is planned for development in the future. Those are the communications.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Bill? Seeing none, we will move on to public comment for items not on the agenda. Did we receive any registrations of people wishing to speak, Joe or Bill?
We do have some registrants, registrants for the next item, not, not any for general, general comments.
Thank you. Moving on to item five then. Public hearing on the amendment to the 2020 through 2024 Transportation Improvement Program for the Madison metropolitan area in Dane County to add Highway 12 and 18, the new county trunk AB interchange project. And so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and invite staff to give a short presentation, and then we'll go through the speakers who are present for the meeting.
Sharing my screen here. Everyone see the screen? Okay. So I'll keep this, I'll try to keep this relatively short. I know City of Madison, Alders, board members and are, should be familiar with the, with the project by now. It's been going through city approval process related to the bill grant application. Think you all know the location of the, of the project. US Highway 1218 is here, and this is AB, this current intersection, and then the Mill Pond intersection over here, servicing the Ho-Chunk property and the, and the golf course. Just some history related to the project. So these two intersections have been a safety problem for a long time. In recent years, oop, I'm sorry, recent years, there have been some low-cost improvements made at each of the two intersections in 2011, 2015. In 2015, WISTOT completed the US Highway 1218 Freeway Conversion Study, which recommended an AB interchange with a frontage road access to Mill Pond, which is essentially the same project that's being considered now. And then later in 2018, WISTOT had considered a Meyer Road overpass and AB interchange as part of the Beltline Interstate Interchange Project. But when the scope of that project was scaled back, that was eliminated from, from the, from the project. And on I would note, since that time, I know the city has been urging WISTOT to implement a safety, some safety improvements at those, at those intersections. So since then, the city did approve a development plan for the Ho-Chunk property, which, which kind of highlighted the, the ongoing safety issues. And in fact, that approval was conditioned on safe access, which the interchange provides. Then last fall, WISTOT initiated the process to analyze safety improvements at those intersections. The MPO approved the tip amendment at that time to add those projects to the tip, but the scope hadn't been determined at that point. And then during the fall, analysis was conducted on potential improvements at the intersections. And basically, the conclusion was that, you know, any at-grade options don't provide sufficient safety benefits and, and would not operate at acceptable level of, of service. In terms of the safety and operations analysis, you all know, as we've talked about, there are a lot of high severity crashes that occur at these two intersections as a result of the high volumes on 12, 12 and 18 and the high speeds. As part of the evaluation, it was noted that most of these crashes occurred during daytime, but you know, with dry roadway conditions. So, you know, lighting is not the issue. They're not happening, they're happening, you know, during, during good conditions, what should be good conditions on the roadway. The result of the crashes, large part because of the delays for people accessing 12 and 18 at those intersections. Because of the delays, people are making poor, poor decisions and getting onto the roadway. And then both of these intersections have been rated at the highest level in terms of potential safety improvement. In fact, you know, combined the two intersections rate the highest of any stop control intersection in the state for, for potential improvement. So a variety of different designs were looked at, at grade and grade separated for the two intersections. But the, the current proposed project with the interchange in the frontage road connections was selected for various reasons. Addresses safety at both intersections because of the very favorable cost benefit analysis that has allowed the use of safety funding, which was talked about at our last meeting, to cover a, a, a good chunk of the project cost. The, this project as proposed is also consistent with the freeway conversion plan that WISTOT has, as well as the MPO plan and city plans. And the analysis that was conducted showed that the at-grade options just would not operate at an acceptable level in terms of operations. And then just a note, this was pointed out again last time. Our long-range plan does identify the Reiner-Sprecker Road Corridor here in yellow as an important long-term arterio that is recommended at some point in the future as neighborhoods on the east side develop for an expansion to four lanes. And, and, and we also show, recommend the interchange as well there. So this is a map showing the proposal. Give credit to Tom and his staff for this one. I still have a few slides of his. But so the, shows the interchange here at the, at relocated intersection of AB. The frontage roads, I'm sorry, the frontage roads on both sides of 12 and 18. And, and then you can see in the, kind of the blue, the brown dash line, the planned extension of AB in the future. In green there is the temporary or interim connection to existing AB. And then you can also see the planned future Meyer Road overpass, which again is not part of this project, but could be built in the future. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. So the project does include pedestrian and bicycle facilities as part of the project. You see there highlighted in yellow in terms of that, that area. It includes both on-street and off-street facilities. So this is a cross-section of Mill Pond Road looking east. And so you can see the shared use path on the, on the south side, the bike lanes as well. And then for the short section of AB, south of the interchange, the, the path would, would continue as well. And again, bike lanes on that. And then over the bridge, on the east side, there is a 14-foot raised sidewalk for shared head bike use. That, that's, it is a quite generous amount of space. It allows for the, for the kind of the 10-foot typical path distance, as well as the two-foot shy distance on either side. And then on the other side, a 10-foot raised sidewalk as well. So in terms of the Meyer Road overpass, this was recommended in the city's neighborhood plan. It doesn't make sense to construct that now for, for different reasons. One being that the development of the planned neighborhood isn't expected to occur until the landfill closes, which won't occur for at least 10 years, potentially much longer than that. There is a lot of uncertainty right now with the neighborhood plan due to, actually two proposed solar farms now in that area along with the, with the landfill. And also the fact that this would be a local responsibility for, as far as cost. So this just shows, kind of highlights the county's landfill in relationship to the plan, neighborhood plan. So you can see, you know, just again, unlikely that you're going to see particularly any residential development before the landfill would close. There is a potential for expansion of the landfill to the east. And also, as we understand, the county is, is potentially looking to allow increased height for the landfill, which would extend the, the period of, of operation. So, you know, providing again, some, quite a bit of uncertainty in terms of when development would occur. And then finally, there's also been recently a proposed NGNE solar array, which as you can see from the, the photo in the bottom left, there's a couple of different potential locations. But at his right, smack dab in the middle of the planned residential development for this neighborhood. So that, obviously, if that went in, that would significantly affect the plan, have to be revised. And, and then just in terms of cost funding, so $28 million construction costs, another eight million for, for right of way. As I mentioned, the safety funding will be used for, for the bridge, for the interchange, with some additional federal funding covering majority of the rest. As I understand it, the cost-sharing agreement with the city, county, and Ho-Chunk is still being worked out. Maybe that has been finalized. The city did pass a resolution at its meeting, council meeting last night to support the matching funds for the project, which would pay for the frontage road connection to the Ho-Chunk property. And then WISTOT is applying for a federal build grant, which would provide potentially another $10 to $15 million for the project, which is scheduled for construction in 2022, 23.
Thank you, Bill. So I guess I would ask staff to indicate who wishes to speak from the public, since I don't have that list in front of me. Joe, are you the one who has that, or does Bill?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay.
So the first registrant we have is Lindsay Lemmer.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Jack, this is a daily travel route for folks in my district, even though it's not actually in my district. And, you know, as has been, you know, presented, it's not just one of the most dangerous areas in the city. These intersections are among the most dangerous in the state. This is a crucial opportunity to leverage grant funding and this intergovernmental agreement in order to make law needed and law overdue improvements that will definitely save lives. This intersection is only getting busier and more dangerous. Hearing the data that was shared about the number of crashes, injuries, and deaths in the last five years, to me, not supporting these improvements and endangering more people is, it's just not acceptable. This agreement and the grant support is truly a rare and extremely time-sensitive opportunity. And this is something that the city has been advocating for and working on for, I believe, two decades. Additionally, you know, I encourage you to also consider that this is also an equity issue. Ho-Chunk's facilities do employ large numbers of Ho-Chunk tribal members, as well as Native Americans from other tribes, and they deserve to be safer. Most people who come here and work here are not able to access this area of the city with means other than a car. And, and yes, it's also true that this project will allow for improvements that Ho-Chunk wants to make to their facilities, and that will allow them to employ even more people. And I do think that's a valid reason to support this too. So, you know, let's just reduce the risk of more lives being endangered by this dangerous intersection needlessly. And I hope this body will support this project and the critical safety improvements it brings. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Lemmer. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Daniel Brown.
Daniel, welcome. Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So this is a six-year project we've been working on. And, and it's all about really raising the standard of living for the Ho-Chunk people. Current and past legislators of the Ho-Chunk Nation will attest to the fact that, you know, we're just trying to raise the standard of living for our people. The needs of our people continue to outpace the ability to, for of us to fulfill those needs. So this is a, this is an opportunity for us to provide additional funding so that we can adequately fulfill the, the needs of the Ho-Chunk, of the Ho-Chunk people. We understand this is a safety issue. As was mentioned, you know, I have 300 employees at Ho-Chunk, Jimmy Madison, the executive manager there. We have about 8,000 visitors a day. That's 7,000 vehicles in and out of that, that dangerous intersection on a daily basis. You know, we've been working with the City of Madison with the zoning and permitting. We've gotten through the GDP process, the SIP site implementation plan is something that, you know, that would be the next step, and, and we can't get there until we have an interchange, a safe, you know, safe access. And so this is extremely important for, for our project going forward. The, the idea of, of bike paths and pedestrian opportunity is something that's taken into very careful consideration in our plans for our campus. We understand that there are some concerns about that. And, but just want to make it known that, you know, we, we have every intention of providing for, you know, for those opportunities. Also, this, this idea of Meyer Road seems to be an issue that, that has come up on a, on a rather frequent basis in the past three nights now. What might need to be understood is that the Ho-Chunk Nation, we have been, we, we have BIA funds, Bureau of Indian Affairs Roads Funds. And for the past three years, we have been putting, putting funds back for the, the southern route off of AB. And what that was is, is a route that essentially goes on the southern half of the, of the, of a golf course, sort of running parallel with, with the, with the interstate. With the interchange and a frontage road that's going to run to Mill Pond, we have to question whether or not we need that southern road. Might there be an opportunity in the future for us to collaborate with, with the City of Madison, with Meyer Road? I think that's a viable option, something we can seriously consider going forward. This is a first project. This is a first multi-jurisdictional project. We want to, we want to exhibit to the federal government that this can be accomplished successfully. This, it may not be a perfect project. There are a number of issues that have been raised. But certainly, a successful project like this would demonstrate to the federal government that all of our jurisdictions can work together for future projects, which may very well include the Meyer Road project. Again, I guess I just want to reiterate the fact that this is a, this is a very important issue for the Ho-Chunk Nation, for the community. This is economic development opportunity. Safety, obviously, is a very foremost concern for us. And we appreciate, just, just very much appreciate your support going forward with this, with this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Is there another speaker?
There is another registrant, Chris Hampton, I believe in town. There is another registrant, Chris Hampton, I believe, town of the Chair of the Town of Cottage Grove, registering in support, but doesn't wish to speak. And then I also wanted to see if Alder Martin had she had registered for item seven, but I think she might want to find out.
Yes. Thank you. I sent my items, five and six registrations, a little bit after. Sorry about that. You know, I echo a lot of what Alder Lemmer and what Mr. Brown have mentioned about this project and support for this project. As we've heard, this this intersection is extremely dangerous. I have driven and been at this intersection, and it it's scary to drive. I I feel like it would be unconscionable for us to postpone a partnership with the state. So where costs for safety improvements can be shared between jurisdictions, as as Dan Brown mentioned. We know that this project isn't perfect, but it is a vast improvement to what we have now. Again, I think it's important to note that that businesses south of 12 and 18 would also be affected in addition to Ho-Chunk Gaming Madison, including a gas station, a hotel, and the Harley Davidson store. And that with any expansion that Ho-Chunk decides to do, that's just going to bring more volume of people, more volume of cars, bikes, and pedestrians. The thing that that matters, that is really important to me for all of you to hear, is that this is very much an equity issue. If you take that equity lens and look at this, this, the folks that that travel through this intersection are disproportionately Native American. And I think it would be safe to say that this intersection and and this stretch of road is probably the one most traveled by Native people in our city. And we need to recognize that. I think that I've, when I've heard folks talk, speak against it, I think that they have a blind spot to this. And and it really kind of speaks to a structural institutional racism that exists in Madison, in Wisconsin, and in the United States. We need to make sure that we see this, and that we see that addressing the safety issues with this intersection does have to do with Native people and equity and racial justice here in our city. I have a background working, I used to work at the Wisconsin Department of Education, or Transportation, sorry. I was a statewide tribal liaison. We did, and that program continues to do a lot of work on issues related to transportation, like transit, highway construction, getting folks into highway construction jobs, and transportation safety is obviously a huge part of that. The Intertribal Affairs part, section of DOT has a safety program that focuses on the multimodal transportation issues for Wisconsin's tribes, with an emphasis on improving data collection and submission of that data to the state. Historically, this data has been hard to come by. And and this has been an active process to get information about safety on roads on or adjacent to tribal lands. It also brings key stakeholders together to identify, plan, and address transportation safety needs in Indian country. This project is part of that. I spoke to two of the tribal liaisons. I spoke to the project manager at DOT who have worked and spent a lot of time on this project. I have heard folks say that this is this is the solution that's not, you know, favored by folks in transportation circles. When I talked to folks at DOT, they said this is standard. This is the safest option that we have available to us now. And I think it would be a huge mistake not to approve this. So I urge all of you to support this project. And please vote yes. Thank you.
Alder Martin, thank you. I think that was it for the speakers. Does anybody have any questions for our three speakers or for our registrant Chair Hampton?
Mark, before we, I just wanted to mention that I see that there's two other registrants in support, representing the Ho-Chunk Nation, Sarah Lamu and Lawrence Walker Jr.
Okay, we'll add that to the record. Thank you. Are there any questions of our three registrants and our three speakers? I don't see any. So at this time, I will thank you for participating, and I will close the public hearing. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you for coming or for participating. Item six, Resolution TPB 172, approving amendment number five to the tip. Bill, did you want us to add anything else to your presentation? Otherwise, obviously, we'll have a motion, the recommendation is to adopt the resolution. The staff recommendation, I mean, is.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the the tip amendment, in addition to the interchange project, the tip amendment also includes some other things that we added. One of them is a reallocation of some of the of our STBG bin funding between projects in in 2020. So the MPO had approved three roadway projects for funding this year, Cottage Grove Road, Gammon Road in Madison, and then McKee Road in Fitchburg. Cottage Grove Road, when that project was let, it came in under budget. And the city agreed to release 450,000 in federal funding that we had approved. If they had not done that, the funding would have been lost. And so and then also, the city is releasing about $40,000 in funding from that had been allocated to the Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Education Program that they will not be able to spend because of the two headbike coordinator positions being vacant for most of last year. And so that funding is being reallocated to the Gammon Road and the Key Road projects, kind of proportionately based on how short those projects are of the kind of the full 60% funding. And then the other thing that the amendment includes at the request of WISDOT is a couple resurfacing projects on State Trunk Highway 19, one of them in Wanakee and Westport, and the other between Sun Prairie and Village Marshall.
Thank you. Alder Tierney has the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to move to adopt the amendment, if that's appropriate at this time.
Sure. Motion by Alder Tierney. Is there a raised hand motion by another member? Alder, oops. Alder Wood?
A second.
Okay, thank you. Do either of you have any discussion? Anybody else have any discussion?
No.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Alder Tierney, and then I have Alder Foster next.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your consideration of this amendment. And in particular, I want to express my appreciation for Alder Lemmer, Alder Martin, and Mr. Brown from the Ho-Chunk Nation for their comments in support of the proposal for Highway 1218, where it intersects with Mill Pond and the Highway A B intersection. I've spoken with you, I've spoken about this project at the last meeting, and I just want to relay that I was actually out in that area. I checked it out today earlier with my car. And the one thing I noticed once again is that there was vehicle debris at the intersection of Highway 12 and 12 and 18, Mill Pond Road. And I just find it remarkable that each and every time I go through that intersection, there's the evidence of an accident that can be plainly seen. And it is a project that needs to move forward. And we need to to keep it on track to get it done. First and foremost, for public safety, but then also, I think the economic benefits it will have for the Ho-Chunk Nation and the greater Madison area, especially will be much needed at this time as we move forward with attempts to have an economic recovery. And in terms of bicycle and pedestrian access through other areas, I know there's a lot of discussion about Meyer Road. And actually, in conversations with a lot of my constituents, what I've received back in terms of feedback is that the established Madison neighborhoods that are south of the Belt Line would like to see those pedestrian and bicycle access go across I-3990 first, so that if there are employment opportunities with the Ho-Chunk proposal, or just to give people free access with bicycles or walking or running, you know, from neighborhoods that are already established. And then at the future, if if and when Yahara Hills develops, then look at Meyer Road. That's some of the feedback I've been receiving as well. So I thank you very much for your consideration and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Foster, you're next.
Thanks. I had some questions for staff, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
So my questions were around this, some of the info on the slide was kind of new to me. So I just wanted a little bit more info. The slides that talked about the potential future expansion of the landfill, as well as the solar farm, and I can't remember if there was something else, but there was a lot of information that looked like there could be other barriers to implementation of the Yahara Hills neighborhood development plan. So I just hope I can get some more background on that, because this is the first time hearing of it.
Go ahead, Bill.
That information about the proposed solar array and the potential landfill expansion was presented by City of Madison planning staff at a at a staff meeting within the last few weeks. I don't know where the MG&E solar array, you know, where that's at. I think it sounds like discussions are just, you know, beginning on that. But it also sounded like there was quite a bit of support for that. And then the other thing I didn't mention, I just happened to see in the paper recently, was that the county is also planning a solar farm in that general area as well. Perhaps Jerry might know the exact location, but it sounded like it was right, right in that area as well. So the what was discussed at the meeting was whether it made sense to to go back and start like start work on, you know, revisiting the neighborhood plan now. And it was decided to wait until it was to, you know, what to see what happens with the with the solar farm and the landfill expansion before starting work potentially on a revision to the neighborhood plan.
Thank you. And then my other question is related to Meyer Road crossing. So I've also heard some sort of different information on that. On the one hand, it's shown as still a future planned connection. But then I understand there may be some challenges with constructing it. I heard tonight that the Ho-Chunk may be willing to contribute towards that project in the future. Can you share what you understand about the feasibility of and cost of and opportunities for construction of that Meyer Road overpass?
I would defer to either WISDOT staff or Tom on that. I know there was some discussion in the HS H, the Highway Safety Improvement Program application that I read, that that the the kind of the jug handle, which I think was shown in the plan, that there was some issues with that in terms of compatibility with potential future expansion of the interchange. So I'm I'm not certain on that. But perhaps, I don't know if Tom or John or Steve from from WISDOT could speak to that, perhaps.
Can you raise your hand if you're going to speak next, please? Tom, maybe? Found you here in my list. There you are. Okay, Tom, go ahead.
Okay. So I'll I'll give a very brief explanation of what I know. But we have John Besterman here. And so he really, I should not speak on behalf of WISDOT, but you know, I should speak on behalf of WISDOT.
And he's unmuted, too.
Yeah, so that's good. I was mostly going to raise my hand to tell you to unmute John Besterman.
Right. Yeah, we did.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. From a costing perspective, Alder Foster, what we did in the past was we looked at an option for a jug handle interchange at Meyer Road. And I want to say that cost at the time was about $10 million. Of course, that wouldn't be what I see being talked about today. It looks like what's being talked about today is an overpass and a structure, and that would depend on how wide that structure might be. So if you were to implement a structure like that in the future with the approaches, you'd probably be looking at about $3 million, I would guess, at this time. I don't have an accurate estimate today, because we haven't looked at it for some time ourselves.
Would that help explain the jug handle component? Would that be needed for connection to the highway? Or would the overpass itself be connected to the frontage road then? What are the sort of differences in the two designs that you're describing?
Well, the jug handle was a standalone, a separate solution. That was a shorter term solution that if, in fact, we were to fully expand the I-3912 and 18 interchange beyond what we had to or did, that potentially those ramps would have ran into Mill Pond Road with that large interchange expansion. And doing so would have caused the need for some solution at Meyer Road. But we didn't do that. And so hence, the Meyer Road jug handle solution wasn't necessary, and wasn't driven by the I-3912 and 18 interchange. So we were also, at the same time, spent many years looking at this Highway 12 and 18 corridor. As was mentioned here, two different times, 2011 and 2015, doing safety improvements. It's continually been been an issue for us, and of course, Madison and Dane County and the nation. And so with those past safety improvements, you know, we've exhausted the ability to do lower level solutions. We've looked at trying to do other incremental solutions, and like Bill had mentioned earlier, unsuccessful from an operational perspective. And with the solution we have today, it very, it fits exactly with the freeway conversion 84295 environmental document that was approved in 2015, and does accomplish the most reduction in crashes and safety benefits. And hence, the safety dollars being implemented here are probably about the largest amount of safety dollars given to a project across the state of Wisconsin. So this is, from our perspective, a great opportunity for all of us in our partnership to move forward.
I appreciate the additional information. So again, just the the overpass itself, you said it was two to three million, perhaps?
Yeah, I'm guessing at that right now. We can get you a better number down the road. But it's typically for a structure like that, over a multi-lane highway, it would be about two to three million dollars.
And that would be that would be able to connect in with the north frontage road or not?
Yes, it very much has that opportunity. Yes.
So and I don't know, this might this might shift back to Tom Lynch in terms of, I understand the frontage road is the local responsibility. In terms of the overall design of the project, if you were to keep the A B interchange as proposed, and if there were a Meyer overpass, would the south frontage road be needed for access?
That for you, Tom? Is that for you, Tom?
I was actually looking for the cost. John, I believe the costs were closer to 15 million. You gave them out at one of your meetings.
Yeah, that included real estate, Tom.
Yeah, okay. So that, perhaps, is what it was.
Big, big real estate numbers.
Yeah. It would be, some of it would be dependent. If, if all the development in, I'm going to call it southeast quadrant of the BIC interchange felt like access off Femrite Road was sufficient, so that would include the Ho-Chunk Nation and all the other developments, then that frontage road would not be needed. But I want to say this in a, so that would take care of the crash potential at Mill Pond Road. Now, I'm not sure, Alder Foster, if you were thinking of...
I'm suggesting keeping the A-B interchange as proposed, but basically, instead of the south frontage road at the cost of, I think it was three and a half to five and a half million, if instead of building that, we build the Meyer Road overpass, which is really called for in the plans, and I think brings a lot of benefits, basically, that would allow not only access, if Meyer Road were extended, or when it's extended, it would provide great access to Femrite, but even in the immediate term, with the connection to the north side frontage road, it basically provide the exact same level of access to the, yeah, but be it via the other, the proposed A-B interchange, but the north road and over the Meyer Road bridge.
Yeah, no, this...
That's, that's possible, Alder Foster. And I did send you the wetland map today, and I think you saw that. And so I, the consultants that WISDOT had working on the Meyer Road said that that was a constraint. And it actually is, or at least Greg Fries and Rob Phillips think it's a pretty significant constraint as well. That doesn't mean that, you know, roadways happen over wetland, you have to mitigate them, but you do have to show a no practical alternative, you know, the 404 permit process and Clean Air and Water Act, so.
Yeah, Tom, I think that's a great point. I was going to mention that as well. But I think also, the comment made about access, well, it is, it is a significantly different access issue from I-39 to get to those locations that we're talking about without having that frontage road and having to go to the, I believe, what you'd have to go is to the, by the ways to the wester east to come back around the north side and then across.
Could you explain that a little bit more?
I believe he's thinking of having both.
Yeah, I don't, maybe you're misunderstanding. So I'm suggesting that the A-B interchange as proposed moves forward, but without the south frontage road, you like on the north frontage road and the Meyer Road overpass that I think everybody wants at some point in the future, it would basically save us five or so million dollars of local construction costs for a really duplicative south frontage road that's going to just take up land from the golf course.
If I can jump in, you know, I throw out that estimate fairly loosely. So again, Tom, look back in the documents, it said it was 15 million, but you know, what I didn't give you in the $10 million number was the $5 million in real estate to build that, which was some pretty hefty costs on the ends of that, on the ends of that overpass, that Meyer Road overpass. So if you're looking as a project, I thought you were asking for the cost of a structure and approaches, but if you're looking to build that and connect it, you know, you're probably at least double that number. So if ours was $15 million at the time, which Tom is correct with real estate, and you subtract out those jug handle ramps, which weren't, weren't very large or lengthy, you probably are more closer to seven, eight, nine million dollars for a solution.
Thank you.
If I can just ask a clarifying question. So Grant, what you're asking is, or what you're advocating basically, is having no frontage road on the south side and allow the connectivity to curve via Femrite? Is that what you're saying?
It would be both, both via Femrite, but also via the north frontage road.
Or the north frontage road, too.
Is going to, is going to extend and connect that and create a north frontage road all the way up to a hotel. It would also, I mean, it would address one of the fatalities that happened, I think, maybe the most recent, which was a pedestrian crossing the highway from the hotel to the gas station, which I understand is not, that was not the only time that's ever happened. If we're serious about having a Meyer Road connection at some point, and I get the argument that perhaps it's not as needed now before there's any development, but even without that, even just for improving access for the Ho-Chunk area, Yahare Hills Park, connecting that up to Femrite, yes, would be an incredible asset and improvement. And if it's a question of sort of, you know, perhaps a slight increase, but you know, relatively very small increase in a $35 million project, particularly if the Ho-Chunk said they had some money that's been set aside for a project that they'd be willing to look at contributing for this future connection, I guess my ask is that it's looked at, and I understand it as sort of a complication, and I'm sure there's all kinds of timing elements involved, but to me, not building that south frontage road would really, would really go a long way to deal with some of the concerns I have. I think it would really, maybe it was still a freeway expansion, and it's, you know, there's some issues there, but I think it would really reduce the stretch of concrete in that corridor. It would be a wiser use of funds in my mind, because if we, again, we're either pretending we're going to build a Meyer overpass later, and we won't, or we really want to, and if we really want to, then with that five or six million that we would basically waste on a frontage road towards getting this thing built now, seems like something that should really be considered. So I guess that's what I'm advocating for.
Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? I don't see any hands up.
Mark, I just wanted to make one comment about that. One thing that that would do is, I guess, provide indirection and reduce the access from McFarland, because they'd be, they would, residents of McFarland would be using A-B coming up the south, so they'd have to cross over the bridge and back again south to get to the Ho-Chunk property coming from that way. So that is probably not the biggest consideration about your idea, but it's, it's the one drawback, I guess.
Yeah, I guess I would just throw out one other consideration. It would also eliminate one of the needed roundabouts on the A-B interchange, which I expect would also reduce some of the costs. And I don't know, the real estate acquisition might be the same, but reducing the cost of that roundabout, and obviously, the safety benefits of eliminating that there as well, I think is another benefit for that alternative.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Wait a few seconds. Tom? You raised your hand.
Yeah, I did. I raised my physical hand. Am I unmuted? So can we ask questions of previous speakers? Or is that not, are we beyond?
If nobody objects to that, I don't have a problem with that. Does anyone object? If they're still here, is it one of the Alders or...
It's actually the Ho-Chunk Nation, Dan Brown. Is he still here?
I don't...
Yeah, Dan's still here.
Is he?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
He's not, he's unmuted.
Okay. Mr. Brown, this is a question, because you did raise the possibility of the Meyer Road over, and the discussion rate recently within the committee has been regarding the south frontage road and how that provides access to the golf course. And I really don't know the details of how the golf course wants to be provided access or not, but it would also impact how access is provided to the Ho-Chunk. Via the A-B proposal with the south frontage road, it would be through the A-B interchange. If the south frontage road was eliminated, all the access to the properties of the Ho-Chunk, but also, you know, Harley-Davidson and everyone else, would be via Meyer Road and Femrite. Does there, are they equal in your eyes, or are they not equal in your eyes?
Hello? So, so I just, I wanted to be clear, and maybe I wasn't quite so clear, and I feel like I've thrown a, some confusion of the issue. What we have negotiated between the city, the county, and WISDOT is something that we're, we're committed to right now, as is. What I was suggesting is that with the successful execution of this multi-jurisdictional sort of plan in securing federal funding for this interchange, is that going forward, we have, we might be able to, depending on the, you know, the, I guess, willingness of, of all parties, consider diverting some of the funding, the BIA funding that we had set aside for a southern route through the golf course, not the southern, not the southern frontage road from the A-B interchange. That's not under consideration at this point. What we were looking at is the possibility of, with the successful execution of the plan as is, going forward, we might consider, and I, you know, I have to defer in part to my tribal leadership, but we might consider, going forward, a collaborative approach to Meyer Road in addition to what we already have established.
Thank you for allowing me to ask that question.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify your position, because there's new alternatives are being proposed within the discussion.
And I guess I'd also like to jump in again if I could. So from a schedule perspective, and the many years of collaboration with the city, the county, the nation, the township, that drove us to this point of having a successful finding of no significant impact on an environmental document 2015, which was pretty, pretty substantial. And, you know, that is the footprint that we see today, so we're following that footprint from that collaboration. Should we step back to make significant changes? It would definitely drive the schedule back from where we're at today. We have funding secured and program years that are coming up very soon, and it would also very much put that build grant proposal in jeopardy, because the build grant has to have projects being let by a certain time, and this really would potentially put the project in jeopardy from a grant perspective.
Tom, did you have anything else to add? Were those your questions of Mr. Brown?
Those were my only questions on Mr. Brown, because there was a, I was discussing a new alternative, and so the new alternative had access consequences to different parties in this multi-jurisdictional group or whatever, so I...
I have had a request from Alder Martin to address the body again. Is there anybody who objects to that, since it's beyond the hearing, but obviously, it's in her area? Does anyone object? If not, Alder Martin, did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I wanted to kind of reaffirm that, that changing the, a project of this magnitude in a committee, especially after it passed the city council last night, 15 to 5, isn't fair, it's not equitable, and I really think that, that, that there are a lot of jurisdictional issues that, that maybe folks have not considered. As Mr. Brown mentioned, this will also have to go back to the Ho-Chunk Nation leadership. This involves, you know, city, county, township, and the tribe. And that, that's huge, and, and making changes like this on the fly is going to absolutely delay this process and keep more people in danger. So, thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak to the motion, which is to adopt the resolution? I'll wait a couple of seconds in case any hands go up. Seeing none, I am going to presume that we are not going to have a unanimous, is there anybody who wishes to have a roll call vote? Can you just... Okay, let's, Bill, would you please, I'll unmute everybody, and then we'll do a roll call vote, it's been requested. So the motion is to adopt the resolution, and roll call vote has been required.
Okay. Burke Mini.
Aye.
Aye.
Flot Meyer.
Aye.
Foster.
Oh.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, Grant, I didn't catch that, no.
Tac.
Aye.
Lynch.
Aye.
Manley.
Aye.
Minahan.
Aye.
Opitz.
Aye.
Stravinsky.
Aye.
Tierney.
Aye.
Enwood.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you again to the speakers. You're welcome to stay and, and see all the exciting work we do. Alder Martin, you have a great background, by the way, I like that.
Oh, thank you.
Although I think Chair Minahan gets the prize for the best natural background. I don't see him at the moment, though. Okay, moving on to, moving on to item seven, approval of letter of support for WISDOT's build grant applicant, I was 12, 18. Mute everybody again.
Yep, thank you.
Except for myself, and then the other co-hosts can unmute themselves, too. So, Bill, did you have a, any comments on this item?
No, this is just a letter of support for the WISDOT build application that they're going to be submitting in, in May in partnership with the other, with the city, Ho-Chunk, and I believe the county as well.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion to support the, the letter, I assume?
Yes.
Yep, draft letter support recommend. Is there a motion by Esser? Let me see here, I'll unmute you. Mayor Esser?
Yes, I made that motion.
And...
Mr. Chair, I think you're muted, but I'll, I'll second.
My goodness, I muted myself instead of, okay. All right, thank you. Any discussion, please raise your hands if you have any discussion. Hearing none, or seeing none, with favor signif, or we'll just have it pass unanimously. I'll get the hang of this before the end of the meeting. All right. Mr. Chair, this was number seven, right? That was number seven, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to note that Alder Martin is registered to speak in support, I'm not sure if...
Oh, okay, I didn't know that, I'm sorry. No, she's saying no.
No, okay.
I think she's saying no. We'll just assume that. Alder Foster...
We also had the same registrants from Ho-Chunk in support of both, of this item as well, as, you know, as well, so.
Just record me as a, as a no vote.
As a no vote on that one as well, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. But otherwise, is there anyone else who wishes to be recorded as no? Otherwise, we'll assume it's unanimous other than Alder Foster. Is that okay with everybody? Seeing no other hands, we, that motion passes with Alder Foster opposed. Item eight, approval of scoring and proposed funding of STBG Transportation Alternatives set aside program project applications for 2020 through 2024 program cycle. Bill?
So actually Ben Lyman from our staff is going to lead this discussion on this item presentation. So I'm going to have, I think he's, he got booted out, but it looks like he's back and he's going to share his. He's unmuted, okay.
There he is.
Welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you. I apologize in advance if I get kicked off again, I have no idea what happened. I've had dozens of successful Zoom meetings recently, but I got kicked out of this one earlier, so crossing my fingers. With that said, I'm going to go ahead and start to share my screen. Here we go. Okay, so for this, this transportation alternatives program funding and the the federal dollars that the NPO gets to administer in our planning area, we had eight applications in this cycle. This is a biannual cycle. It's technically for actually four years worth of funding, but the first two years are worth of funding of our allocation was allocated two years ago. So in this project round, we're actually allocating funding for FY twenty-three for the state, which would actually be July of twenty-two through twenty-four. We received eight applications, one from the Village of DeForest and the DeForest School District, four from the city of Madison, two from the city of Sun Prairie and one from the Wisconsin Bike Federation. The, I'll go through all of those, I'm going to zoom in here. A little cumbersome, but faster than doing it with GIS on my connection. So we have the DeForest Schools path, which goes basically through the playfields behind the high school and towards the middle school. In Sun Prairie, there's a commercial drive, sorry, Commercial Avenue reconstruction path and then a Grove Street path reconstruction as well. And there'll be individual project maps for all of these. In the city of Madison, there's the Tancho Drive path along one fifty-one, which would tie into the the network running up the Sun Prairie and then with the underpass of one fifty-one. And the Autumn Ridge Path and Overpass over thirty from Highstead Park. And then there are two sections on the Main Street path, both a west side and an east side project, we'll come back to those shortly. And finally, the West Town Path on the southwest side of the Belt Line on Watts Road. So with that, I'm going to zoom back out so that we can see the rest of my documents here. All right, so this is the site map for the DeForest Schools path. The fifty-one Frontage Road has a separated path to the north that was constructed as part of that, that the freewayization of that that project. Everything's been graded along there, it just hasn't been paved yet. There's a major drainage corridor that comes off the agricultural lands to the east. So the, the city and schools are extending Jefferson Drive here around that drainage area. And that, that's going to be happening independent of this project. This project would then build the separated path that connects all the way through and to the south and to the neighborhoods and to the west to the middle school. The Autumn Ridge Path unfortunately is expensive enough that we're not able to fund it. The federal requirement is that we're funding at least fifty, or the feds are funding at least fifty percent of the project. We have one point one five million dollars available in this cycle. And this is over a four million dollar project. So unfortunately, we don't have enough money to fund it at the minimum requirement of fifty percent. So it's one of those, no matter how well it scores, how much, how great of a project it is, we simply can't legally fund it. So our recommendation would be to forward that to to WISDOT. So the Main Street project on the city of Madison, there's the West Main Street portion, which was proposed to include some pedestrian bump outs and wayfinding, some other amenities. And most importantly, an RRFB signal at the Proud Fit Crossing, which would tie Main Street into Brittingham Park and the paths there. And then the east side, which would also include a connection along Bount Street to the Capital City Path and the the green lanes that are there that tie into the Lake Loop and Jenny Street. The Tancho Drive again, as I said, connecting to the path along the south side of one fifty-one, going under the underpass, there's an existing path at the Sun Prairie there. This would then connect it back to the the city of Madison on that side, the west side. And finally, the West Town Path project area would connect both future paths along the Belt Line and then the, the it's the Gammon Road, no, that's High Point Path. And then going over to the the new paths on the far west side. So it's an important link that's not there right now. And in Sun Prairie, the Commercial Path, which is a corridor that that gets bicycles and kids off of the Main Street corridor and connects a lot of neighborhoods to both schools and parks. Middle school here, and I believe that the new high school is on the west of this. Mayor Esser could correct me, I'm sure I'm not terribly familiar with Sun Prairie. And then the existing high school is to the east. And then finally, the Maine and Grove Path replacement. And that would be tying in a a future path that's going to be constructed, the Musket Ridge Path and neighborhoods to the east side of Sun Prairie, reconstructing this path. It's six to eight feet wide, very rough, doesn't meet the the ten foot requirements for bidirectional multi-use path. And then that connects over to the other side of the the existing Sun Prairie High School. So those are the maps for the projects. We, as I said, we do also have the countywide Wisconsin Bike Federation Safe Route to School proposal. And in your packet, you have descriptions of all of those and the recommended for funding. I'm going to go skip through those and come back to them if if anyone has any questions. Wanted to get right to the scoring. We have separate scoring criteria for non-infrastructure safe routes to schools projects than we do for infrastructure projects. So they were ranked separately. That said, the Safe Routes to School program really scored very well at eighty-nine percent or eighty-nine out of a hundred points. As you, many of you may remember, last year, we revised the scoring criteria to really focus on environmental justice areas and equity issues, both in the infrastructure and the safe routes scoring. And so using those new scoring criteria, this project, which is really focused on schools that that need a lot of special attention, high obesity rates, high rates of free and reduced price school lunches, local champions at the schools, involved bodies. And and because of that focus, but then also because the program is open in a lesser degree to all schools and they'll provide support and consultation and materials to all schools. It really does have the potential to reach every child in the area at any school that wants to participate. But again, it does really focus its, its most, most of its efforts on schools with with high populations of at-risk children. And then for our infrastructure projects, we had a pretty wide range. They're ranked along the bottom, you'll see the the Safe Routes to School at eighty-nine percent really did come in much higher than any others. The second ranked project was at eighty percent is the Madison West Town project. Most of these criteria for the infrastructure projects are fairly self-explanatory. One thing that Bill Schaefer and I talked about wanting to just point out is on the cost effectiveness category for project cost benefit. The way that we calculated that was essentially we took the project cost, relatively easy thing to do. And I'm sorry, we took the the total score from all of the other criteria except that and we divided it by the cost and then we used some other factors so that we got a reasonable number out of it. If that score came out above ten, we gave it the ten, ten percent. And so you see on the Sun Prairie Commercial Avenue and the Madison West Town, both of those maxed out at the ten percent. But that's how that project cost benefit was determined. I can, I can show you the actual equation on that if anyone cares to see it. And so coming in at the third place, we had the DeForest Schools path. Madison Autumn Ridge scored at the fourth place. As I said, unfortunately, we don't have enough money to fund that project since we're required to fund at least fifty percent of it with federal dollars. So can't, can't fund that. And then the Madison Main Street came in fifth, Madison Tancho Drive at sixth. The Sun Prairie projects, both of those are reconstruction of existing paths, but bringing them up to current standards. So they vary between six and eight feet in width, they're very irregular, they're not signed striped very, very consistently. And so because those links already exist, they didn't score very well in terms of creating a a new or missing link, extending the network. So they get that two and four percent score there. So that that is one of the main reasons those projects didn't score as well. That said, because of the amount of money that we have available, we're still recommending to to fund the Sun Prairie Commercial Avenue project. So we did prepare three different options for funding. Option one is staff's recommendation. We would fund the Wisconsin Bike Federated Dane County Safe Route to School program at eighty percent. We would fund the West Town Path extension at sixty-two percent. And I should also note that because of the adopted funding formulas that we use, where if a project is costs less than three hundred thousand dollars, it is our policy to fund it at eighty percent. If it costs more than six hundred thousand dollars, we funded it, I think it was forty percent. And then we, or I guess sixty thousand, or sixty percent, sorry. And then everything else between there is on a sliding scale. So these other projects that are between three hundred and six hundred thousand come in at different percentages of funding. So again, the West Town Path Extension funding at sixty-two percent, the DeForest Schools Safe Route Path at sixty-three percent. The Commercial Avenue Project, because we wanted to use up that one point one five million dollars and not leave it on the table for another two years, when it potentially has less buying power, we wanted to to use those dollars. And because the Sun Prairie Commercial Avenue Path is the least expensive project and we also wanted to make sure that we were spreading these federal dollars around the the area, we are recommending that the Commercial Avenue reconstruction be funded at the full eighty percent, even though it was ranked at number seven. And then finally, because we still had another hundred and ten thousand dollars that we didn't want to waste or let sit around. We talked to the city of Madison and they are amenable to funding a reduced portion of the west side of that project. So basically focusing on the RFB at Proud Fit and Main and then doing some other priority improvements and wayfinding and things that they can do relatively cheaply, not doing the curb bulbouts for pedestrian crossings on Main, doing some restriping. And they can do that at a fifty-five percent funding. Again, we have to fund it at least fifty percent. And this way, they, we still get to use that hundred and ten thousand dollars. They get that project funded and we don't leave anything on the table. That said, there are two other options we came up with for your consideration, if if that doesn't sit well with you. The the first would be.
Ben, I just want, sorry, sorry to interrupt you. I just wanted to add that we, in recent discussions that with with WISDOT, so what the city is going to do is submit a new application for the eastern part of Main Street for potential funding through the statewide pool. So basically just separating that project in two and we'll fund the west side, you know, the west segment with our funding and and the other segment will be submitted for consideration for state funding. If the board approves this option.
Thank you.
Well, not this option, option one. This option wouldn't give any money to the Madison Main Project. It would basically reallocate that extra hundred and ten thousand dollars and fund the West Town Path Extension and the DeForest Schools at higher percentages than our adopted funding guidelines for this program. So those would both get funded at seventy-two percent, whereas under our adopted guidelines for funding, they're coming in at sixty-two and sixty-three percent respectively. So that's, that's where those extra dollars go rather than being used on the Madison Main Street project. And then finally, option three, where we would do the Dane County Safe Route School project, the West Town Path Extension, the DeForest Schools path and the Main Street and those two, first, the West Town and the DeForest Projects, again, funded according to our adopted funding policy and then just putting the rest of the money that's available at the number four ranked project, the Madison Main Street project. Again, not enough to do the whole project, but but they would be able to do a larger portion of it than under option one. However, again, one last time, staff's recommendation is that in order to spread those dollars around to more communities in in our region, that we go ahead and fund the reconstruction of the Sun Prairie Commercial Avenue path. And with that, I'll take any questions anybody has.
For some reason, I don't see my, because you're sharing your screen, I don't see my.
I will stop share, here we go.
There we go, that makes it easier for me to see who's.
If it is in share screen mode, if you, when it is in full screen like that, if you hover to the top of your Zoom screen, there's a view options tab that pops open and you can hit the full screen.
Okay, yeah.
And that'll bring up the participants.
Thank you. Okay, we have Alder Foster.
Yeah, this is, this looks great, thanks for doing all the work. I'm supportive of the staff recommendation, option one. I had a couple just quick questions and I know we'll probably go into revisiting the scoring guide next time before we do this again, but while it's fresh, I just had a couple of questions on it. So the high usage criterion, can you describe what, kind of what that is and how it's calculated?
Yeah, so for high usage, what we did was look at land uses that were in the area, connection to other other paths in some areas, such as the reconstruction of the the paths in Sun Prairie or for the DeForest Projects where there, there's sort of a captive audience, there are already people using those facilities or walking across those fields. It was relatively easy to to estimate how many people or what proportion of the neighborhood might be using those. Other ones, such as, for instance, the the Autumn Ridge Overpass, because there is a very significant barrier to pedestrian and bicycle travel because thirty runs runs across there. We, it was a little bit harder, we had to look at the bigger, the bigger picture and look at residential densities and job densities and the location of services. And and then just had to use our professional judgment to come up with with something that that seemed good. And we did have, I think, four four of us who who looked at this on on multiple occasions and and discussed pros and cons of the the scoring and hammered these out. It was not, not something we were able to use streetlight data for, not something that we're able to look at ACS and see exactly how these paths might be be used. So we were really just using our professional judgment to do our best estimate of of how much use it might get.
Thank you.
I would just add also to, on top of what Ben said, that one of the challenges with these projects and and scoring them is the fact that in a number of cases, what we're seeing is a phase of a multi-phase project. For example, the West, that West Town Path, there are, there are and other segments that will connect to the segment that we're funding. that will connect to the segment that we're funding. Same thing with that Autumn Ridge Overpass. That doesn't connect that much right now, but eventually will be, you know, part of the planned path connection to Sun Prairie. So there's always that issue of, well, what do you assume when you're scoring the project about, you know, when these other segments will occur? And, you know, do you score with those segments or without those segments? So that is definitely one of the big challenges.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's challenging for residents a lot of times to understand it as well. And they say, why are we building a path to nowhere? And it's hard to continue to play as one segment of a future thing. So Ben, the environmental justice and health equity, could just real briefly, could you describe kind of what, how that scoring was arrived at?
Um, yeah, let me just take a look here back at the- So yeah, there we were basically looking at zero car households. We were looking at families below, I believe, 150% of poverty. We were looking at the Dane County, I guess it was the Kepler Regional Planning Commission in Dane County came out with some health indicators or barriers to health indicators in a report several years ago. We were looking at those. And so looking at a variety of factors in terms of making sure that, one, quite often in transportation planning, we're looking at making sure that we're not putting bad facilities in sensitive locations. We don't want a whole lot more exhaust in an environmental justice area. On the flip side, we also want to intentionally bring facilities in that will help serve and provide access to jobs and the services and to schools for those disadvantaged and vulnerable populations. So again, this was something where we looked at a variety of map layers, their proximity to the project, and how they would fit in. And so both of the Sun Prairie Projects are fairly close to either existing or planned habitat for humanity projects. And so they're really serving populations directly in terms of getting those folks into the core of town, getting them to schools, getting them to employment. Same thing for Madison West Town, just based on its, you know, where it is in terms of creating that final link between other existing and planned paths and proposed things. It does really help connect that neighborhood to the larger network. The Madison Tanchow Drive path, not so much. There's some senior housing in that area, but not, it didn't, it didn't appear to us to be a facility that was going to help get environmental justice populations to school, to jobs, to services. The Madison Main Street Project, although it goes very close to many communities that are zero car households, that are minority or low income populations, it's also, especially on the east side, really, it's a block from the capital city path. And so is there a huge benefit to those populations when there are other existing facilities? The same thing with, on the west side, the Bayview community. Certainly, this could be an asset for them. However, from that corner of East Washington, Proud Fit/Region, they're still going to have to cross West Washington and Proud Fit Region. And they could do it at the stop controlled, the light controlled intersection right there at West Washington, Proud Fit Region, or they could go a block away to the new RRFB. We didn't see that that was a huge benefit to that community. And so that's why it didn't score as well, even though it is, you know, in proximity to minority and lower income populations. So I can go into more than a few-
No, that's fine. I think I'm getting a sense of it, and I don't want to take up any more time, but I appreciate the explanations you've given. Thank you.
Alder Heck.
Thank you. I guess, Ben, you pretty much answered my question. I use West Main Street to get from my bill paying job to my alder job most every day. And you answered my questions about why West Main and the whole Main Street project was perhaps easier to play with. And I was going to ask about option three, but I'm convinced that option one is appropriate. Thanks.
Is that a motion, Alder Heck?
Sure, for approval of option one, yes.
Buster? Sorry, if you wanted it to be the other way around. Any other raised hands? I don't see any at the moment. Seeing none, well, there is one. Bruce?
Yes, I would second the motion if nobody else.
We had Alder Foster. We had-
Did we have it? Oh, okay. I missed that, I'm sorry.
That's all right. He didn't say anything. I probably should have un muted him. So I will, let's record this as having, so the motion is to endorse option one. Bill, did you have anything else to add before we vote?
No, I don't. Thanks. You did a great job.
Ben, yeah, Ben, thank you for that thorough summary. It was very good. Okay, is there, is there anybody who objects to? Is there anyone who opposes this? If you do raise your hand, otherwise in a few seconds, I'll declare that it's adopted unanimously. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item nine, I think that's what we're up to. Resolution 173, approving Amendment Three to the Unified Planning Work Program. Bill?
Yeah, just very, very briefly. So this is indeed an amendment to our 2019 work program, and just kind of a technicality, but we need to extend the period within which to expend our remaining 19 funding for one month from the end of May to the end of June, which will be used to complete the rebrand project and then also to renew our subscription to streetlight data. So currently, we were supposed to have spent that money in invoice for that by May. And so we just need to extend that one more month.
Okay, thank you. Having trouble unmuting that. Mayor Hesser?
I unmuted myself. I want to make the motion to approve the extension.
Okay, is there a second? From, okay. Bruce, you seconded?
I will second it.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, is there any objection to the motion to approve? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item 10, update on the MPO, rideshare, et cetera program, rebranding project, approval of the MPO and rideshare, name changes, discussion, possible approval of agency and program mission and vision statements. Bill?
Yes, I am actually going to have Zia lead this one, but I'm going to share my screen there to show the staff recommended names for, new names for the MPO and the TDM program, taglines, mission, vision statements. But I'm going to turn it over to Zia to just give you a brief update of where we're at and to go over with you what we're proposing here.
Zia, thank you.
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So at the last board meeting in February, we went over a presentation of the results of the consultant distilleries' internal and external audits, which included them talking to a large number of stakeholders, including all of the board members here, lots of folks from the public and private sectors in Madison, MPO staff. And so they were really looking at, you know, getting a lay of the land for the MPO as well as the, what's currently the Rideshare, et cetera, program, which is our TDM program. And so I believe that's, yep, that was in your board packet, that full presentation, it was pretty extensive, looking at takeaways for, you know, who our audience should be for each of those, our tone, our values, all that sort of stuff. And they came up with probably six different, or actually probably more like nine different name options for both the MPO and Rideshare, et cetera. And through the discussion at that meeting, as well as kind of internal staff discussion prior to and following that, we are looking at, for MPO, for the new name to be Greater Madison MPO. And what we're hoping for at this meeting is if the board is able to make a final decision on what the new name for the MPO would be, as well as what the new name for the TDM program would be, that distillery can then go forward and develop three different visual systems, which are essentially the logo, and then with some additional examples of how that logo would be used and what things like public PowerPoint presentations might look like and things like that. But essentially, they would come up with three options then for both the agency and the program. And we'd have an opportunity to look at those at the next board meeting. And that also, I should mention that CARPSY, kind of in the meantime between our February board meeting and today, they were interested, they decided that they were interested in tagging on to this in the sense of, you know, this is an opportunity we had built into this RFP for distillery that saying that we wanted to look at ways that we could kind of tie the two agencies together. We weren't doing a formal joint branding process, but we certainly want to look at more ways that we can brand ourselves as sister agencies or partner agencies. And so then the CARPSY board decided that, yeah, this is a good time that we'll actually bring distillery on to look at refreshing our logo. They're not looking at changing their name, but looking at more how visually we can connect the two agencies. So that has become part of the process, and we think that's, you know, a really good thing. And so I, Bill, I could go through kind of what the upcoming meetings are. Do we want to go through that in terms of, you know, the ad hoc committee and?
What time do you, briefly, if there's some appetite for it, but maybe not too detailed.
I think, yeah, I think maybe starting with just to get reaction from board members about the names. That's really the critical thing for tonight. The mission and vision statements don't have to be finalized, but we, that's the action item we need tonight is to make sure that there's agreement about the names so the facility can go forward. And then after that discussion, then we can talk about the, briefly, the next steps, which is, as Zia mentioned, the presentation of the alternative logos and design elements at the next meeting, which will be a joint meeting with CARPSY.
Yeah, so between the two things here, we've got the agency as one decision point, and then the TDM program as the second. From the last meeting, it seemed like the board, like there was pretty much a consensus around Greater Madison MPO. So we thought that would be what we would be recommending tonight. Alternatively, Madison area MPO was something that we heard some interest in, but it seemed like at the last meeting, folks were more liked the, liked putting greater first. So kind of getting to that this is Madison and beyond. And then after that meeting, so at the last board meeting, we had not really discussed the tagline or the mission and vision statement. So these are the first times that we're showing those three things.
And then why don't you go ahead and talk about the TDM program name, too?
Okay, sure. So then for the TDM program, similarly, we felt that it sounded like there was good consensus around the name Round Trip. So that's what we're recommending tonight. There was also interest in Go Dane. And Go Smart is something that wasn't presented at the last board meeting. It was not something that was presented by distillery. But we have, there's a TDM coordinating committee that we convene quarterly. And it is, it includes a number of members, agents who partner, like City of Madison, as well as folks like representatives from UW Madison, Sustained Dane, Thousand Friends of Wisconsin, a variety of different groups and organizations that are interested in TDM. So I shared our rebranding process and results to date with them at the last meeting. And they also liked the name Round Trip. And then the option of Go Smart was suggested by one of the members, and there was a lot of interest in that as well. So we put that on here. The discussion at that meeting was that people liked the go as an action word and smart being, everybody likes to be smart. So that was kind of the main, like, this sounds like a great name. When we brought it to distillery afterward, they said that it, they would not really recommend it because smart is so often related to technology these days in terms of smartphones or smart cars. And so they felt that it could be confusing to people who aren't familiar with the program as to what it's all about. So those are some of the considerations there. But ultimately, we felt that Round Trip is still something that everyone we've talked to likes.
You went back and forth, right?
Yeah, and while, and we're pulling in the smart, the smart options are the tagline, so-
Right, yep. Yep, so we thought that would be, and for this, we see the tagline for the program being used probably more frequently in materials together with the logo probably more often than, you know, maybe like, well, we'll see where it goes with the MPO. But certainly for a program, this is, a tagline is something that you would see a lot.
Tom Lynch has raised his hand. Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, so would you like, I have a couple of thoughts regarding word changes on the mission statement. Would you like us just to email that to you? Or how do you want to address that?
I think it's fine to talk about it right now. I'd like that.
I think one thing that I'd like to, I can say this quickly, and then I can check it off my list, and I won't forget it tomorrow. When the mission statement for the MPO, by the way, those are great. So thank you for working on this. And I think that I feel good about them. The mission statement, it talks about the Madison region's evolving transportation vision. And to me, that the word evolving kind of makes it seem like we haven't made up our mind, you know? And we don't really use the word sustainable. And I'm not quite sure if, I believe that this, the board is moving and embracing kind of sustainability in almost everything. Like the COVID thing is kind of taking us off track for three months. But I believe that most people believe in pure greenhouse emissions and all sorts of things like that. So I wonder if the word evolving would be maybe replaced with sustainable? Just a thought.
Or how about innovative?
Innovative would be good. It would be nice if we had some-
Yeah, I understand.
It would be nice if we had some, that's, if we are moving in that direction.
Sorry, Tom, Alder Foster.
Thanks, yeah. I also, I guess just kind of running through it, I feel good about either Greater Madison MPO or Madison Area MPO, I think those are both good options, so I'm supportive of, of either. Tagline sounds good to me as well. I, I like Tom's point about the, the mission. I think you have, for a vision, I think you want it to be clear and precise, you don't really want it to be blurry or coming into focus, so I agree that maybe evolving's not a, not a great choice there. And then really strongly agree about needing to, to really bring in sustainability into this, so perhaps in the mission statement, and I would say, also, maybe you're looking to put it in the, the vision statement. I think that would maybe be a good place for it as well. Perhaps the, I mean, the end of the vision statement to achieve an exceptional quality of life for all, maybe that's an element that gets swapped out for the sustainability part. And then on the TDM program, I also, I think all three names are good. I don't really have strong preference, but I think Round Trip kind of stuck out for us last time, and I'd still support that. I like the tagline, and maybe similarly in the mission statement, I like the connection part, but if we could include another element of the program, which I think is sort of an alternative to driving alone, kind of have some element in that, in the mission, because otherwise theoretically, you could achieve this mission by just, everybody drive cars everywhere.
That's true. Thank you. Anybody else have any feedback on these, these, this work that's been done on the project? Thank you, Zia, for this, by the way. Margaret, I have you next.
Yes, on the mission statement, I agree with deleting the word evolving and in, somehow including the word sustainable or sustain, sustaining. And I'm not real thrilled with the idea of vision. I'd rather talk about transportation systems, because that's what we're doing, not just ideas, we're actually doing, we're approving plans. So I would propose an alternative that would read, "To provide leadership and collaboratively planning and funding a sustainable transportation system for the Madison region."
Could you, I'm sorry, read that one more time? You said vision, but I think you're reading, what were you reading?
Region, yeah.
Region, yeah.
Yeah.
To provide, to provide leadership and collaboratively planning and funding the Mad, excuse me, planning and funding a sustainable transportation system for the Madison region.
Oh, I see.
Um, one note on that, because we, as we talked about these with Distillery and all the meaning and how people would take various words, they felt that system was something that two people outside of the transportation world might be, not be able to grasp what that exactly means.
And, and I would counter that the word vision is something that's overused and vague and somewhat disparaged by the general po, the general public.
Yeah, I was just going to remind, I think when we had a, we had some good insight, I think, when we were talking about sort of our potential customers, and the insight that I heard was that perhaps our key customers, especially for the, the MPO itself, not, not really for TDM, but for the MPO, is probably a lot of the transportation professionals, and that's sort of in terms of who we want to recognize as, et cetera. So I think in that, in that realm, I don't have a strong preference around vision system, et cetera, but I think it would be okay if the mission statement of the MPO were a little bit on the technical side, or sort of playing towards the engineers in the, in the region. I think it'd be more appropriate, and maybe I think, maybe I see the, the feedback from Distillery that if we did something like that in the TDM program, that might be a, not a great fit, since we're, I think, trying to connect more with sort of the everyday person in, in that branding. Oh, and my other, last thing I forgot to mention was to consider making the verbs a little bit more active in, in the mission statement, so instead of to provide leadership, maybe just to lead, and to make it a little bit more active and, and direct.
Just a reminder to folks, if you want to raise your hand, if you hover to the top of your, your Zoom screen, there's a view options dropdown, and you can go to exit full screen, and that will bring up your participants panel on the right and your raise hand option. I do see Mayor Esser, looks like he wants to be recognized.
I don't see him on my screen.
If you don't mute me, thank you. Thank you. So I, I did not figure that out, Joe, I was trying to hit, to find it, I didn't know how everybody else was doing it. We're using a different system, I think, in some period. I want to say that this, we've put a lot of time into this prior to this meeting. I feel real uncomfortable with developing new language for this as we meet here on the fly. I never liked doing that, I think it takes some deliberation and thought, and I think that's already occurred. We've had a lot of people participate. I'm good with what we've come up here, with the recommendations for the MPO name and for the TDM name, both of those are acceptable to me. I'm fine with what we've got right here. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve these, that may not be successful, but that will at least allow us to figure out where we're at, because now we're kind of all over the board, we're talking about this and editing it, and I don't know where we're at. So I'd like to make a motion to approve these with Greater Madison MPO as the accepted one, and Round Trip is the accepted one, and I'm good, so I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? If you could raise your hand with the instruction that we just got? I'm sorry, who said sure?
I'm sorry, I just, I, I was going to get out of the share screen, so just easier for.
Well, I, okay, I have, I think we have someone here, Alder Heck.
Yeah, I'm going to second for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, thank you. Now, is there any further discussion? Alder Foster.
Thanks, just wanted to clarify, I think with Bill and Zia, it sounded like the primary goal is to, if we can lock in the, the name recommendations tonight, and that there, it wouldn't necessarily slow things down if you took the feedback that we gave on the mission, vision, et cetera, and maybe came back at a, a future meeting with that, is that, is that a good understanding?
Yes, that's, that's correct, that, yeah, we did, the, the names is, the names and preferably the taglines, too, but, but just really the names is what we need action on tonight, and certainly fine with doing some fine tuning of the, the mission and vision statements, since this is the first time that we had presented to the board, and, you know, so I, you know, certainly think some good points were made about some of the language, and we can come back with the next meeting with some, you know, a couple of different options that incorporate comments that, that we heard, so that's perfectly fine, but yeah, the names is the key thing.
So if we just move an amendment, then if that's okay to confirm names in the original, in the main motion, but ask that staff comes back with a, a final recommendation for the mission, mission and vision statements at a future meeting.
Okay, so it's an amendment to the motion, you're making it as a formal motion?
Yeah.
Okay. I actually had Alder Wood recognized next, did you want to second that motion, or did you want to speak to the main motion?
Well, I actually had a question for Mayor Esser.
Just, just, why don't we get, for parliamentary reasons, why don't we just get to see if we have a second for that motion? I'll, I'll second it just for, for discussion here, so, okay, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, my question, I guess, was whether, may, were the Paul's motion was intended to include everything that we had there, or just approving the names?
Um, sorry, let me, I gotta find, you know, I wish this were in alphabetical order. Where's Mayor Esser?
All right, now I unmuted, you gave me the option to unmute myself. So my point was, Doug, to approve everything that was there. What Grant has, the amendment, I, I can accept that. I, I don't particularly like it, I don't like this editing the mission and vision on the fly, I don't care for that, but it seems like that's acceptable for other people, but I want to see us move forward with this, we put a lot of time into this, we've had a lot of discussion on it, we've used a consultant to help guide us. You know, I'm not going to have any improvement in these from what's here, and, and so I'd like us to move ahead with this, and that was my point then, Doug, of approving everything that was on that screen. Okay, thank you. I did think there were some good points made with regard to the other, the mission statement, the vision statement, and so forth, so I, I would rather just that we approve the names themselves tonight, and since it is the first time we've seen the rest of it, to have that brought back to us.
Okay, Tom Lynch, did you have any comments? Looks like you were.
There's so many smart people in front of me, they asked a lot of my comments. I had a clarifying statement of, of Mayor Esser, if it was just the names and the taglines, or the whole thing, and then I had a question regarding, how do we see in the vision and mission statements previous to this meeting, and it sounds like we have not, is that correct, Zia?
Right, these are the first times that we've brought those.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe one way to handle it, I guess if, if, and we don't want to do this with all of us bombarding Zia, but if, if, you know, Grant and if a few people had specific suggestions, I'm sure sending them individually, not, not in a group email, you know, wouldn't, I think that would be an appropriate way to interact with, with Zia and the team, Distillery team. So is there any other discussion of the amendment to the motion, which is to endorse the MPO name, Greater Madison MPO, and the tagline, but to defer the mission statement and vision statement? Did I get the motion, the amendment right?
Yeah, I don't know if this, I think this also included the name and tagline for the.
Oh, TDM.
TDM as well.
Sorry, my, you're right. Okay, is everyone clear on the motion that's in front of us? Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, is anyone opposed? Could you raise your hand if you're opposed to the amendment? Okay, seeing none, that will record that as passing unanimously. And it's, I'm glad we heard from you, Paul, that you, you didn't know how to raise your hand, I guess if anybody else still is unclear about that, maybe we should wave, sort of acted earlier in the meeting, sorry about that, if we, if we snubbed any of you, that certainly wasn't intentioned.
I'm clear in this format, it was the other one where the form was up that I couldn't see it.
I see, yeah. I'm still struggling to, actually, I have three screens going right now, so, but I've got it down. All right, so all in, all in favor of the motion, or we already recorded it as, as unanimously approved, okay? Excellent, thank you. Scrolling through the packet here to get to the next item. Didn't realize there was, oh, I should just go back to my agenda, oh, that was it, is that, was that the last item?
Yeah, just the last one was if there was any status report, our usual capital area RPC activities, status report, if there's anything of, of, of note.
Okay, Alder Foster.
I can't answer that one, because I had a conflict for the last meeting, but I did have just a point of order, it's a technicality, but I do believe we probably still need to take a vote on the motion as amended.
As soon as you said I have a technicality, I knew what it was. All right, so on the, thank you, just, just to clarify, so we, we voted on the amendment, now we have the motion as amended, as amended, thank you for the reminder, Alder Foster. So is there anyone who's opposed to adopting the motion as the main motion on the previous item? Seeing none, we will record that as being unanimous as well, thank you. It's usually, you know, usually it's not this difficult at a regular meeting, and, you know, you're throwing everything at me tonight. All right, so announce, or other, going back to the last item, any announcements or updates?
I think members Stravinsky or Minahan might be able to provide an update from the
Mr. Str, Bruce?
Yes, just that, the only thing that we really had was you.
What happened?
Hey, Bruce, I'm counting on you. Looks like we lost him.
Yeah, it looks, he may have been kicked out or lost connection.
So what happened as that happened, I was unmuting Bruce, and then I unmuted Ed, and as soon as I did that, there was that, I saw a flicker, so I don't know if I was the cause of that, or?
I doubt it.
Okay. Well, Ed, that leaves us with, that leaves you to the.
Yeah, it leaves me. You know, the, the working together has, has worked quite well, the co-location is working, CARPSY is, we're proceeding along the, sort of the same lines of the rebranding we just learned about. So we're in pretty good shape, we have a couple of things before us, minor, minor development issues, nothing really major. We're having the combined meeting later, either in person or this way, so.
Thank you for that update.
And I would, I would just add, add that, that staff is starting work on the regional development plan update, and they've set up a technical advisory committee for that, they had their first meeting, I'm participating on that, and they'll, more information to share with the MPO board on that going, going forward.
Thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other announcements, or we are planning our June meeting, obviously, to be the next meeting, right, Bill?
Correct. It'll, it's a, it'll be a joint meeting with CARPSY, we may, we may have a, a one or two item agenda before that joint meeting, if we can, if we can work that out, you know, for, for meeting virtually, which is probably likely at this point, so need to figure that, figure that out, but we may, but primarily, it's going to be this joint meeting with the presentation by the consultant. I think, I think we'll also have a brief presentation by CARPSY staff on the regional development plan, just to get MPO board members up to speed on that, and how we'll be coordinating with them on that in terms of our next transportation plan update.
Okay, thank you. The next item is adjournment, is there somebody who would like to be recognized as adjourned? Doug, I, I don't remember who else seconded, how about Mayor Esser, since you, you were quiet tonight? Whoops, you're, you're muted again, sorry. Just a second here, looks like you wanted to say something. Once again, I'm not able to find him, it's just, oh, here he is, okay, there you are.
I seconded.
Okay, all right. If there's no objection, we'll be recorded as unanimously adjourning. Thank you all for participating, and we'll, we'll get, make this even smoother next time. All right, take care, everybody, good night.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone.